Monday, April seventeenth. This is a public hearing to begin with tonight for our building project. We're gonna start tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no media present with us tonight. So let me, let's just get on with the public hearing. This is a notice of this meeting has been published in The Times Union and The Tribune News on March the eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. The lease agreement, plans, and estimates for the Whitco Junior Senior High renovation and improvement project by the Whitco High School Building Corporation have been on file from the date of publication until today in the administrative offices of the school corporation. Copies were presented to the board members for inspection. The school corporation is funding this project through a lease financing as it has done with other past construction and renovation projects. Lease financings are used by school corporations across the state of Indiana in order to borrow for renovation and construction. If anyone has any questions about the project, these documents, or the previous actions of this board, they are free to ask questions. If you have a question, we need you to sign in at the center podium right now, state your name and town clearly. We would ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and the topic be limited to the proposed project under consideration. I don't see anyone running to the podium, so I don't think we have anyone to speak. No? Okay. Mr. Pavarnik, could you please summarize the resolution authorizing the execution of lease agreement?
As required by the school leasing statute, Indiana Code two thousand and forty-seven three, after a hearing, the school board must approve the lease and authorize the officers to execute the agreement. This lease is the agreement that the school corporation will levy the required property tax to pay the lease payments. The payments, the lease payments will be paid to the building corporation and used to pay the bondholders. Without the lease, bondholders will have no assurance that the building corporation will repay the bonds. The lease is the collections, is a mechanism by which property tax collections can get to the bondholders.
Could I have a motion and a second to adopt Exhibit A, the resolution authorizing the execution of lease agreement?
I make a motion that we adopt Exhibit A, the resolution authorizing the execution of lease agreement.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded, that we have a motion to adopt Exhibit A. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes. Mr. Pavarnik, would you please summarize the resolution assigning construction bids and contracts to the building corporation?
The building corporation currently owns a portion of the Whitco Junior Senior High School building and will be the issuer of the bonds. Bond proceeds will be held by the trustee bank and will be used to pay the contractors. As a result, the construction bids and contracts will need to be with the building corporation because the building corporation will hold the money to pay the contractors. The school corporation receives the bids and/or contracts and awards the bids and/or contracts under state law, and then assigns those bids and/or contracts to the building corporation.
Could I have a motion and a second to adopt Exhibit B, the resolution assigning construction bids and contracts to the building corporation?
I make a motion to accept Exhibit B for assignment of construction bids and contracts.
I second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we adopt Exhibit B? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Mr. Pavarnik, could you please summarize the resolution approving second supplement to master continuing disclosure undertaking and issuing bonds?
The Securities and Exchange Commission requires that a school corporation enter into a second supplement to master continuing disclosure undertaking before it issues bonds. School corporation has previously entered into this type of agreement. The agreement requires that the school corporation agrees to timely provide certain financial information to the Security and Exchange Commission's E M M A database and provide notice of any material events.
Could I have a motion and a second to adopt Exhibit C, the resolution approving second supplement to master continuing disclosure undertaking and issuing bonds?
I move that we approve Exhibit C, the resolution approving second supplement to master continuing disclosure undertaking and issuing bonds.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, that we adopt Exhibit C. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion passes. I would entertain a motion to adjourn this portion of the meeting.
I move that we adjourn.
I second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded, that we adjourn this portion of the meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That this portion of the meeting is adjourned. We're gonna move right on into our regular meeting. So I'll call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the school board for the purpose of conducting the school corporation's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting, although there will be time for public participation as indicated by Agenda Item number five. The board receives Agenda Item information and rationale for administrative recommendations for their thorough review before each meeting. We're gonna start tonight with a student of the month. So from Pierston Elementary, nominated by Sherri Bryan, we have Raven Calhoun.
I'm the light skills teacher at Pierston Elementary, and I am delighted to recognize Raven Calhoun as Pierston Elementary School's student of the month. Raven is so respectful, she's responsible, and always has a positive attitude. Every day, Raven walks into school with a big smile on her face, spreading joy among peers and staff. Raven has an enthusiasm for learning and is always the first one to raise her hand and answer questions. She has grown considerably in reading and math this year. Raven is someone who is always willing to help her peers, whether it's assisting a younger student with logging into their computer or offering a pencil or markers to someone else. On a daily basis, Raven will provide positive encouraging compliments to her peers, and that is, that is very true. She is truly a great role model and example to others. We are very proud of Raven and her achievements and truly love having her in our classroom family.
The South Whitley Elementary Student of the Month is Joby Hour, nominated by Mrs. Tammy Datsman.
Well, Joby's right here. He's invisible, but he's not, he wasn't able to attend tonight, but Joby is an outstanding first grade student. Love having Joby in class. He is always a friend. He is a delightful young man who uses great manners. He's always encouraging others to do the same, and if he sees somebody who is not, doesn't have a friend to play with, he plays with them. He always says please and thank you, and he's helpful to others when they need it. Joby is a wonderful, wonderful friend who is kind and shares. He will take what he has and give it, and he'll have nothing. That's the type of person he is. He's gonna grow up to be just a really delightful young man. Joby is a hard worker who works well with others and gives everyone a chance. He has a wonderful sense of humor and is a pure delight to have in first grade. It is with great honor that Joby is our student of the month.
And our congratulations go to Joby. The Whitco Career Academy Student of the Month, nominated by Don Stone, is Austin Minor.
Well, it's gonna be Austin's last night with us. He has finished all his credits that he needs. He completed, what, twenty-six this year? Since the beginning of the year, this young man's taken twenty-six credits. What I'm about to say is not gonna do him justice because this is one of my favorite kids I've ever taught. When I retired out of the Marine Corps, oh nine, to become a teacher, this is the exact population I wanted to work with, the kids that were falling through the cracks, that special ed didn't pick up, be at general education classrooms, really didn't fit for them. Austin comes in every day and works his tail off to graduate. He is always willing to help in any way and at any time if a student needs help, and he understands what it is. He's the first one to jump up and help. He's working incredibly hard, and I am happy not, to not only nominate him for the student of the month award, which is most deserving. I'm also very proud to let you know that as of today, he has completed all of his requirements for graduation. This young man is the exact reason I became a teacher and the reason I still teach. This program is an amazing opportunity for not only these students that we serve, but for those of us that get to walk this journey alongside it.
As director of the Alternative School, obviously they're part of the Career Academy as well, just wanna talk a little bit about Austin. Austin Myers is a representative of the students that we needed to reach when we opened the Alternative School three years ago. We had a goal of offering opportunity for students that may be struggling, struggling academically in a traditional setting, needed a shortened day for medical or family reasons, or simply a way to recapture credits if that, they were unsuccessful the first time around. We've had many students that have been able to meet their graduation requirements over the first two years of the Alternative School. However, tonight, I wanna share a little of Austin's story with you. Austin came in last year in the, in the spring and met with me, as we do an interview process every time we enable someone to come into the Alternative Program, and he had fourteen credits going into his senior year. And looked at Austin and said, it's not, it's not undoable, but you're gonna have to work at it, and you're gonna have to get at it, day in and day out. Austin came to us, his course history showed a number of attempts in the traditional school setting that just wasn't working for him. Austin was not a discipline problem, he simply just did not excel in the traditional setting. During this senior year, as Mr. Stone just talked to you, when I wrote this, he had twenty, twenty-three credits and had three more to go to meet his graduation requirements. I wrote this before I went on spring break. When I came back from spring break, Austin has finished those three, finished up the last one today. So, you know, we're excited and wanna celebrate Austin, his accomplishments during his senior year, and wish him nothing but the best in his future. He's dealt, he's developed a sense of pride in his schoolwork along with a confidence level of reaching his goal. Extremely proud of Austin tonight.
Austin, good job, but I just wanna take a different approach here. These kind of programs do not work unless you have the right individual at the helm. Mr. Stone, you've done a tremendous job with this program, defining this program, allowing Austin to prosper and flower the way he has here and be successful, and I wanna recognize you tonight too, because it's because of you Austin's here. So congratulations. Thank you for what you do.
This is great. Okay, from Whitco Junior High, we have Dylan Nappel, nominated by Amy Evans.
I really enjoy when I get to nominate students. I want to talk about Austin though before I go, because he was a young man, and Austin, I'm sorry for calling you out again, but he was my demonstrator for how to behave and how to be appropriately addressed for an event that we're doing. So all over the place, Austin, you're doing awesome, so thank you. So I nominated Dylan. So I nominated Dylan. You guys probably know me enough by now that I like to nominate those students who just make me smile in the hallway. And Dylan came to us from Columbia City Schools a couple of years ago. I didn't really get to know him very well until he joined our peacekeeper program, and I got to see him be a leader. And after that, he just lights up in the hallway, and you can tell that his peers really think highly of him. He's fun, which, which, you know, the teachers appreciate all the time, but he's, he's just a really neat kid that I've gotten a chance to know just because of his leadership. So that is why I nominated Dylan.
The WICO Senior High student of the month nominated by Sarah Sco is Sarah Watson.
Sarah is another student who I did not nominate, but she was nominated for her positive attitude. Mrs. Scow is our music teacher, she works with a lot of the students. Sarah is a kid who will do anything to help. Every time, every day in the hallway, I see her go down to the cafeteria to get food for other students who are unable to get it themselves, and she doesn't, she always lets me know how many meals that she's getting that day. And just her, her positive bubbly attitude, her willingness to help wherever is, I know the reason why she was nominated, so thank you.
Congratulations to all of our students of the month. We're going to do headliners right now, which is good news from around the district. First of all, we have a valedictorian and a salutatorian have been selected. The valedictorian and salutatorian for the graduating class of 2023 was recently announced, and a big congratulations goes to Anna Arter for earning the position of valedictorian and to Jordan Lininger for being salutatorian this year. WICO's graduation ceremony will take place on Friday, June the second. Fox fifty-five TV channel out of Fort Wayne has announced that WICO sophomore Riley Harmon is being recognized as their most valuable player of the week. After finishing a recent baseball game with fourteen strikeouts in five innings, Riley is being acknowledged for not only his athletic talents, but for taking on a positive leadership role where his actions speak louder than words. CWP is our Wildlife Habitat Education Program Team. It's part of our FFA. Members of this team were Annalise Rios, Bree Spays, Amy Brown, and Lincoln Saunders, and they were third place at regionals and third place at the state. They'll move to national competition in May. And finally, if you get a chance, take a look out in front of our building, our Little Cats Early Learning Center playground is taking shape on the west side of the building. And the funds for this fund addition were provided by the Deco Foundation Grant, and we want to thank them for that. And that's all for headliners. If you're a student of the month and you'd like to leave now, you're more than welcome to do so. In three point O, we have our principal and director reports, and we're going to start with Mrs. Evans from the high school, junior, senior high.
Thank you for letting me go first. It is my favorite time of year for four H gearing up, so I have a meeting to go to. So thank you for letting me go first. I, I really want to spend my time talking about our amazing community. Two major things that have happened recently were Jared Day Auction. We raised a total of six thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars and seven cents. That is incredible amount of money, but it's also the amount of donations that we had was record breaking this year. Those come from staff, school board members, community members, and just the support that we have for that, it's just incredible. Officer Clark really helps us through the auction, through that overall process, so I would also like to thank him in continuing us to, or guiding us through that. So our community's awesome. The second thing some of you may know and some of you may not, we found out that one of our students was walking six miles each way to work, and I, I put something out on Facebook that said, hey, I'm looking for a bike for this young man so he can get home faster, and Officer Clark shared it within five minutes. I had my first offer of, let me, let me bring you a bike tonight. It's, it's just phenomenal, that's what this community does. And then, then by the next day, I had over fifteen offers of money, bikes, and that's what we're about here at WICO. So I wanted to spend my time sharing the awesomeness of our community with you guys. Upcoming events, we're getting into I-Learn. We have our AP testing the first week of May. Uh, let's see, we have our eighth grade students that are attending the Discover Me program, which is a manufacturing opportunity where they tour factories, manufacturing places in Ivy Tech. Our prom is on Saturday, May sixth. We also have our sixth graders visiting at the beginning of May, where they're going to get a chance to meet faculty and other students. And then we have our spring band concert, May eighteenth at sixteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Evans, our curriculum and staff director, is up next.
Some highlights coming up, IGP's are part of NIET, our cap program, they're individual growth plans. They are what teachers set as a goal for themselves based on their evaluations throughout the years, and those are actually going to be implemented this coming school year. The administration with their master teacher will help guide each teacher into creating their goal based on the teaching rubric, so that is a best practice. Those will be, in effect, starting next year. Some of the master teachers are already working on that. Our school, our schools were reviewed Wednesday, March twenty-ninth and the thirtieth, and then Junior, Senior High was April eleventh. NIET has a team that comes in, they review, they have, they have meetings with administrators, teachers, sometimes students, and they give us kind of a grade with areas of strength and areas of improvement. We should have the final report in about two weeks, and hopefully I will be able to share that with you at the next board meeting, and then of course I can provide copies for you. As Ms. Evans stated, I-Learn testing, our state testing, actually the window opens today as well as I-Am testing, which is the testing for our students with special needs. NWOVA again is starting May eighth. The one thing I neglected to put on there is principal standard rubric, I did talk about it last meeting. It is where I meet with each teacher or each administrator, they have set a goal, and they are, I meet with them periodically where they show evidence that they are working on or have achieved their goal. I neglected to put it on because I just finalized the last administrator today, so I will be working on that this week and should have those meetings wrapped up by the end of the The curriculum committee, we have our next vendor meeting, actually this Thursday. Meetings have been in the morning, but due to state test, we've moved them to the afternoon, so we are meeting with Edmentum, which is the same team that we are working with, with our credit recovery group, which was part of our presentation for student recognition.
Thank you very much. From Pierston Elementary, we have Mr. Shannon Lane.
First, I want to say thank you for the board and for our administrative team for allowing master teachers as well as administrators to attend the NIET conference that was held in March. It's a great opportunity for us to learn how our implementation is working for our kids as well as those next steps for our corporation and how we make it more impactful for our kids. So learned a lot of best practices, it's really, my big takeaway was leveraging student work and how that impacts what we do the next step. So myself and Tina Resin from Pierston attended that, that was awesome. We continue to have our second through sixth graders working on syllification, and it's wonderful to hear, I got it, or I'm getting it, when they're breaking apart words that they never thought they could. And that's thanks to all the hard work that our master mentor teachers and our career teachers are putting in to equip our kids with skills to do that. I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to Laura Thong Umpai, or LTU as she's affectionately known. She stepped in and served as our special education service provider while we had a teacher out on maternity leave and did a fabulous job, and more importantly, was always asking questions. She has taught for a few years, a few, and, but she's always willing to learn and grow, so that was excellent. Our fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, they're having a health talk with McMillan Services this Friday, so we're excited about that. And then, thank you to everybody who attended our grandparents day slash special person day, because not everybody has a grandparent. It was a huge, huge success, saw lots of faces. And then last but not least, sixth grade has their music performance on Thursday evening at six-thirty. I do not remember the theme, and they told me I am not allowed to sing, so I will heat them on that as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. From South Whitley Elementary, we have Joel Holstoppel.
So I would reiterate what Shannon said about the opportunity to attend national conferences. It's just a, it's a time for us to get inspired with the work that we get to do, so thank you for that. I also want to invite you coming up this Thursday, the weather's going to be perfect, I'm sure, PTO Fund Fair from five to seven, you're all welcome to join us. The PTO has put together an event for the community, and they've worked with some sponsors, and they're going to be providing a meal to the, our patrons, and then games and other things. Really exciting for us, that's this Thursday. We are going to be working on, with some data cards that we're going to be using to collect student information that we then also use then as we're looking at class lists for next year to try and put kids in the best possible places for learning and the best opportunity for them. And with Mr. Evans, we're also working at, I'm part of the reading adoption committee, where we're looking to find a high quality curriculum that our teachers are calling for, that we need. Thanks to, to Mr. Evans for leading that, because we know that that's in need as we continue to help our, our students to grow. And Mr. Wirthsler had asked me about our, our growth and the numbers at South Whitley, so I did a little digging, actually had Cindy Hatton do that for me, and from last year to this year, last year we were at two hundred and seventy-seven students, this year we're at two hundred and ninety-one. So I'm hoping that continues, and it goes to what we're talking about with our kindergarten that really like us to have a third kindergarten, because we have classes of twenty-five and twenty-six this year, and we're hoping that that continues, but that's just a lot of five and six-year-olds. Thank you.
Thank you. From the WICO Career Academy, we have Mr. Chris Benedict.
A couple of things, upcoming events we have tomorrow, our welding students will be doing their Ivy Tech dual credit certification testing. Also tomorrow, we have Chloe Hathaway doing her second blood drive here at the Career Academy from three to seven. Someone coming to participate in that, that'd be awesome. Later this week, on Thursday, we'll have our show, Second Annual Showcase Day, the businesses come in and see our students in action, and then our students get to interact with those business leaders. Also on, coming up with our medical students, we have Brooke Schroeder, which will be honored on May third in Indianapolis for a Student CTE Recognition for Excellence Award, honoring our medical health science student, Brooke Schroeder. Looking forward to that opportunity for her. And then our ag department and our FFA, coming up on April twenty-second, they have the ICC Livestock Judging. On the twenty-fifth, they have the Area Livestock Contest at Elkheart, and then on May sixth, the State Horse Judging Contest in Danville. Keeping those things out, obviously continuing to go as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The athletic director, Barry Singray.
Good evening, thanks for having me here tonight. Just a few quick athletic updates, our streaming system project has been completed in the football stadium and in the gym. We'll be able to begin using this in the coming fall. We think this will be a nice addition for family members or fans who live well outside the area, so it'll be a streaming service similar to Netflix where people can get a subscription and be able to watch a lot of our athletic events, so we're excited about that. Spring sports, all our sports are underway. We remind everyone to use Eventlink to keep up with all schedule updates and changes as we go throughout the spring. We got spoiled last week with some really nice weather, and then today sort of brought us back into reality, so there'll be a lot of changes, we'll try to communicate those, and the best tool for that is using Eventlink. Peter program updates, spring football and basketball skills camps are coming up in May, and we're currently planning out some summer camps for the youth in the summer as well, so, sorry about that. Moving forward, I'll be taking a group of ten student athletes to the Gray Sportsmanship Summit this Wednesday. We're hoping that this group can kind of propel us into establishing our own student athletic council. And then lastly, our WICO physical night has been confirmed for May twenty-fifth, we'll be working with Bone Center Health. The cost is only twenty dollars, and we can provide financial assistance for any WICO student that needs to get a physical, so the cost is twenty, but financial assistance is available, and this will be available for all WICO students, grade fifth through eleven. We'll be sending out and posting more information in the next three or four weeks for that event, so really want to promote that and hopefully get as many of our athletes there as possible. We'll also have some tech people on hand to help with parents getting Eventlink added to their phones or getting their final forms completed. So I know that can be a little bit of a task sometimes getting that done, so, any questions? Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Director of Operations, Rhonda Snively.
Good evening, thank you for having me. In transportation, as Mr. Singray pointed out, spring sports are up and running and keeps us hopping with all the cancellations and the schedules. We're also working on the summer school wrapping, looking at that and getting some drivers in mind that might be able to do that for us. We're also working on importing all those competitors that were wrapped up to defend our traffic system next year. Big news, we finally have an install, an install date for our fuel pumps, May fifteenth and sixteenth, so we're really excited about that. That because they give us a lot of trouble, and... I'm working with Mr. Mannr currently on a new communications device called Relay. We're really excited about it, we've been testing it and kind of seeing what the range is. It is satellite and web-based, and so far the range is, is very impressive. I haven't seen much of anything that I don't like. We still have a few questions and some things that I will look into, but I'm really excited about that opportunity. Maintenance, we have a new tenant started in South Whitley this week, and he came back, or last week, he came back again this week, so that's good news. I'm looking at working with the elementary, South Whitley Elementary, and Little Cats to get some fencing installed for the playground as well as the playground in South Whitley that's never had fencing, so we're going to look at that, and there's also some fencing at the high school that Mr. Singray would like to pass that up. Mowing season has started, this cold weather may slow us down a little bit, I'm not disappointed by that aspect of that weather. And my main focus now, or one of my main focuses is cleaning up all of the facilities, just going around from building to building, seeing what is out that needs to be put away, what needs to be repolished maybe, and just working to make all of our facilities look better. We have a lot of good things happening here, and I would like our outside to reflect what is going on. Can I have a question?
I want to, you know, I have a sign for the wildflower planting that's at this Pierston Elementary School, so I'll be getting that put up, and also there'll be some corner posts so those flags can go away, so.
Okay, great. I don't know if I've heard of that. I've been told that they were planting wildflowers, but I didn't know exactly who was doing that and how that was happening.
Yeah, it was part of the group of volunteers, and Georgia got sucked into that at the, at Pierston. We planted it in the rain, and it's, was an idea that came about from the last year's Wildlife Habitat Education Program, the web... Wildlife Habitat Education Program, the web team. That year, the focus was on urban areas, and that was one of our sites to look at. It's a kind of a, how can we make this urban area more wildlife-friendly? So if you're interested, the kids I have this year, they're interested in possibly looking at some warm-season grasses or pollinators, flowers that we could put at Pearson Elementary to limit your mowing. And we were looking at things that would be easy to change if we had to repurpose the grounds for a building or something, but yet I've challenged them to kind of look at how much cost savings we would see in fuel and time. And then I want them to be able to present that to you. So that's one of our things we're working on. Okay.
Thank you. Alice and Kellogg are Director of Special Services.
Good evening. Some of my thunder was already stolen, but just to have a couple of highlights from my update. As Chris Evans said, our IAM assessments opened up on April third. That's a, that's the state assessment for students that will be graduating with a certificate of completion instead of a diploma. And so that's mainly for our students that are in applied skills. And so Sherri Bryan and Amy Johnson, so Sherri was there earlier this evening, they have been conducting those. And I just want to give a special shout-out to them because they are conducting these assessments in addition to continuing to run their classrooms. So their class doesn't shut down when they run these assessments. So they still have to make sure that their special education program is going, that their students that aren't taking the assessments are still receiving the services that they're supposed to. And so it's a lot of juggling schedules, it's a lot of coordination, it's a lot of preparation. And so I just really appreciate their hard work to make sure everything continues while they're doing that. And as Shannon pointed out, Brooklyn Wilson is back from maternity leave. We're so good to have her back, and she hasn't missed a beat. She has gotten right back into the swing of things, holding meetings, operating her services and everything. So I just want to take the time to acknowledge LTU. As Shannon said, she was doing all of the classroom side of Brooklyn's programming while I was taking care of all the special education paperwork. And any time I called her and I said, "Hey, I need this kind of data. I need this information," she always had it ready. She contributed valuable information in all of our IEP meetings, and so she just did a really great job making sure that Brooklyn could stay home and enjoy time with their baby and make sure all the services were continuing. I also want to thank Tina Resin, because on top of the master teacher duties she was doing, she was also, there were three students that she was working closely with, and she was contributing a lot to helping out with Brooklyn's case load on top of her normal duties. So I just wanted to make sure to give a special shout-out to her as well.
Thank you. Jason Klein, our Director of Technology.
Good evening. Until ILEARN and IREAD testing is complete, technology department is focusing the majority of its energy on ensuring that testing goes as smoothly as possible for all of our students. Today was a pretty good start to that. Looking forward to seeing how it goes. We are piloting a system called DB that may be able to suit many of our classroom display and hallway display needs, as well as updating our, updating our announcement system, emergency on-campus messaging, and more. Also, we're working with the athletics to get more impact out of our athletics website, and providing better internet to the press boxes at the various fields to be able to handle the streaming that we're setting up, as well as other needs that arise. Any questions?
Thank you. And finally, we have Jamie Pano, our Little Cats Early Learning Center Director.
Hi. As you can see, the playground is almost done. Yay. The kids, honestly, every time they see it, they cry because they can't play on it yet. In seventy-two hours, the cement will have set and they can't go up it. Expansion grant opportunities have opened up for the state. Today, I was informed about an opportunity for our before and after school care program. New safety measures for the center will be implemented for next year, including a separate entrance and exit, a more secure place for parents to drop the kiddos off at. We are offering the Teach Scholarship to any of our staff, employees, associates, bachelors, master programs, degrees are available. We are finalizing details for our new renovation project. Open enrollment will be advertised next week to the public. I put a picture of our playground on the Little Cats Facebook page, and I had a flood of emails the next morning. So public enrollment for the 2023-24 school year will open next week. Right now, I am taking enrollments for our Whitco families and our current families. I expect to have openings for our three-year-old preschool and two-year-old program. Families that have previously enrolled or applied for registration will be contacted first. I will contact them three times before moving on to the next person on the way. We're trying to meet the needs of as many families as possible, but also doing it within state regulations and guidelines. And so that means having smaller class sizes is what's legal and what's best for kids. So I want everybody to understand that we're trying the best we can to meet the needs, for as many families in the community in need of very high-perinfant toddler care. I'm hoping that with these grant opportunities that we'll be able to have at least sixteen more infant toddlers available for next year. Any questions?
Thank you. All right, Mr. Pavarnik, do we have a superintendent update?
I want to thank all the administrators and directors for their hard work and dedication. Your work and our work is impressive and does not go unnoticed. Also, I want to acknowledge two $1,250 each donations, one from Ag plus one from Land the Lakes Foundation to support agricultural education.
Thank you. We have no public comments tonight, so we'll move on to six point O, which has our business reports and consent agenda. We have all been given the list of reports and personnel actions to look through. Could I get a motion to accept these as presented?
I move that we accept the items in six point O business reports and consent as presented.
I second it. Is there any discussion on these? Mr. Pavarnik, did you have anything you wanted to talk about on this?
Thank you. I do. Within the consent agenda is personnel, and within the personnel, we have Mr. Holsopple. He is here tonight, looks like with some guests. We'll meet in a minute. But I want to let the board know and the community know that midway through the year, Mr. Holsopple stepped up and became the interim principal at South Willy Elementary School. And he has done a tremendous job for us there and for the community and for our students. And when I was going around doing my one-on-one meetings these past few weeks, when I was at South Willy Elementary, I think every staff member asked me if we had intentions of bringing Mr. Holsopple back, because they wanted him to come back and be their regular principal. Mr. Holsopple is on the agenda tonight to finish out his interim contract, which would finish out here in the end of June. And then July first, with the board approval, he would assume a regular contract and become the regular principal of South Willy Elementary School. And I would ask the board to unanimous week adopt a consent in support of Mr. Holsopple. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on six point O, the business reports and consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of accepting the business reports and consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand. Aye. Those opposed, the motion passes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Would you like to introduce your guest?
Sure. So I have, I'd like to share, Luke is a senior, Matthew is an eighth grader, and Kayla is a sixth grader.
Well, welcome to Whitco. Mrs. Holsopple, you're, are you a science teacher?
I am.
Yes. At Wabasee. Well, we invite you to take a good look around on the way out of Whitco. You know, carpooling, the price of gas can be really inventive today. But that said, welcome, Joel. We appreciate your hard work, and we look forward to having you continue to be in our team. And I thank the board for your consent, unanimous consent with Mr. Holsopple tonight. This is a great thing for our community.
All right. In new business, we have the reappointment of Cindy Crager to a second four-year term on the Pearson and Washington Township Public Library Board of Trustees. Could I get a motion for that, please?
I move we appoint Cindy Crager for the second term at the Pearson Washington Township Public Library.
I second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we reappoint Cindy Crager to the second four-year term on the Pearson Washington Township Public Library Board of Trustees. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand. Aye. And those opposed, the motion passes. And seven point two, we have the approval of the annual field trips and the following one-time field trips. The list is there for you to see. Can I get a motion on this, please?
I move that we approve the annual field trips and the one-time field trips listed in seven point two.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the annual field trips and the one-time field trips that are listed. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand. Aye. Those opposed, the motion passes. We have no old business at this time. Mr. Pavarnik, do you have any miscellaneous administrative items?
I do not.
All right. The next school board meeting is Monday, May fifteenth at six-thirty, right here in the lecture room. And the week before that, we do have a work session, Wednesday, May tenth, four o'clock, at South Willy Elementary School. And that is a public meeting as well. We do encourage folks to come out for that. Graduation ceremonies are Friday, June the second, at six-thirty in the Whitco High School Gymnasium. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. And I don't think anyone's opposed, so the meeting is adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you.